What music?
You know what? I'm sorry!
Holy shit, Krit apologized!
Oh, glad I got it on camera. Alright guys, well welcome back to some more Vermintide or ender- Warhammer End Times Vermintide. So we've learned some- We've learned a bunch of new things since the last episode. A lot of it from your guys' comments. Um, so-
I was working when they figured all this shit out.
Yeah, so when you block- You only take damage when blocking if your shields are gone.
Yay!
And the dwarf is designed as a tank class rather than a damage dealer, which is why I sucked at him. He's basically there to hold, and whenever he shoves while blocking, he blocks in 360 degrees, and he shoves in 360 degrees.
Wait, is that only the dwarf?
No, all classes do that. The dwarf just has better shielding weapons. Cause the dwarf and soldier are designed as tanks.
No way! No way!
What did he do?
No!
What did he do?
He broke the door!
Okay, so I got a new pair of swords, as you can see, which uh, gives you, has a 21% chance to uh, block, or without taking stamina.
That's the only door I can break.
14% chance that any shot I have registers as a headshot regardless of where I hit them. So I can shoot the rat ogre in the back and get headshots.
Yes, it can. It can protect me from a rat ogre.
It actually can.
Ha!
Alright.
If you were your shield and-
Take us indoors.
Final mission is, what's it called?
Uh, the white rat.
Something like that.
There it is.
I just wanna break a door.
You already did, you bastard!
Are we gonna not acknowledge the one time we tried doing this?
Uh, the one time we tried doing this, Krit fell in a hole and everything went to shit from there.
Hey! The bot made me do it.
Krit jumped off at the start of the round.
The bot made me do it.
Hell!
Our goal is to kill the seer.
He's gray magic seer. He's the one causing the incident, not whatever Kristoff Engel dum dum.
He's Mr. Thumbel.
So, this guy figured out gray magic, and made all the rats this. Yeah?
Maybe? I don't know.
No, the Kristoff Engel guy didn't cause the problem.
Gray magic did though.
It's a gray seer, so...
And it's gray magic.
I thought we were supposed to go down it.
No!
By the way, there's a space down there. Like, there's actually stuff down there.
Also, we found out we can ping with the T button.
That's wrong. That's wrong!
And I'll take that.
So we can ping specials and all that. Oh yeah, let's grab the regular stuff. Also, healing draughts heal 50% of your HP straight up. And the heal packs do 80% of what's missing.
Break the door.
I like opening my door elf.
I used, when we were doing um-
Use the meme, don't waste your-
And Krit still wasted it.
Now he has a shield. When we were doing runs in the wizard tower, I was breaking every single door.
Oh, we have to wait for him to, yeah.
He was mocking me!
I killed the strangler!
Nice.
Without even trying. Uh, HD-
He got hit by the lightning!
He's great!
Did he get hit by that? He got hurt by that!
No, he got hurt by the fall.
Why did I fall?
Because that's, we were waiting on that to explode.
Oh, thanks for the warning.
There are mu- there's a pack of storm guys coming up.
Hey Ghost, remember you got stuck? I'm there. I'll do the storm vermin if you get the things off of me.
Well, fun fact, oh, here they come. Two bombs killed them.
I need the warp rats off of me if I'm gonna hit them with a fireball ghost.
One more bomb will finish off those storm guys.
They're already done. Except for that one. Hey, I remember this spot, Ghost, remember that? Storm vermin!
Jesus, Krit.
I wanted to push him.
Nits.
Oh, your fire was just...
Wait, Nits, I wanna break it!
Why do you need to break everything?
That's not the heal!
Interesting that you just decided to throw that.
No, I tried to heal.
Multiple storm vermin's coming in.
One left!
Get down! No. No.
Where's the third one? There it is.
There's like, oh, there's like, there's a bunch more. Yeah, you can't really stand against them.
Okay, I'm gonna like walk a little bit.
Let's use sentry mode.
I got sentry mode. I got them all.
Jesus, that was a lot of storm vermin.
And I killed every single one of them.
And I didn't get a chance to touch him because I got swarmed by baby rats.
Guys, the door's open.
Alright, get him up.
Oh no.
Oh, I didn't realize Krit was down.
Wow!
Heal, heal.
But what happened to the healing pack was here that I kinda wanna use?
Um...
It used to-
It's right there.
It's right there.
The bodies were covering it.
They have a tendency to do that when they are everywhere.
Dude, might wanna use your potion yourself, Ghost.
Yeah, I'm doing that.
Krit, if you spam your ping button, then you can find it.
The potion smells of ignorance! HD, wait, did you make this potion?
Infinite ammo. Infinite ammo and health things.
Oh, gas rat somewhere.
Got him.
Wait! Oh, hi there!
Can't reach that.
You go around the door.
Hey guys, more specials!
There's also another heal pack.
There's a rattling gunner somewhere.
Rattling gunner and a gas rat.
Where?
Dead ahead.
I don't see him.
Well, they're looking at us.
Hang him.
Rattling gunner is dead.
I wanna use my shield on the rattling gunner.
Oh hey guys!
It does not work.
Oh.
It'll hold off for a second or two, but they keep firing.
They're firing. I'm in a horde, Krit, where I'd help.
I'm guessing every bullet is like one shield break. Or the half a shield break. So I can take 10 bullets.
Watch me.
Yep, everyone guard the barrel holder.
Wait, how the hell do I get over there?
By the way.
Guys, 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 guys!
Where'd you go?
Speed boost while jumping! Yay, one down.
Where'd everyone go?
Oh, down, Krit.
I'm gonna grab this barrel right now.
Uh, you're the blocker, HD.
Ow, I just got lightning.
Oh, just, I'll take it. Block!
One more to go, it's up top.
I see it. Yeah, you grab it, Krit, I'll guard you.
Me and a combat will light it on fire.
Wait, hold on.
Too late.
There is an evil laugh coming from near us, HD.
Ah, to the right, Krit.
Okay! Did not help! Did not help!
Oh, is that gas?
Well, have all the barrels-
Yep, that's lit. Ah, Krit, back away.
Well, you know I'll do that when I'm not making my rats.
Bomb over here, guys.
Alright, Nits got the barrel.
Bouncy time! Look at Ghost, I move faster with the bump, not when I bounce.
Get hit by lightning.
That lightning hurts, a lot.
Ow!
Yeah.
Okay, lightning luckily does not light the bomb on fire, but-
It does. It did.
Did we get it?
No.
But now it's closer. It looks like every time the barrel's closer.
No, it was closer last time.
Come on! Ghost, mind, mind Ghost.
Oh, so you are jumping, yay!
Also, your weapon has, your weapon has slightly longer range than you think it does.
Okay, hit the assassin, I don't know where he went.
I punched him.
I hit him with my shield.
Uh, get away from the pillar.
Oh!
Oh!
Stairs! Matriarch stairs?
Lot of shit from behind.
Oh, grab some ammo.
Oh wait, I won't take that.
God damn it! Yeah, I would've been better off shooting that. I thought point blank swords would be, you know...
You like that, Krit?
Yeah.
Uh, ammo.
Ghost, might as well grab it.
Actually, I don't really need too much of it, but...
Oh hey guys, we ran past the medical supplies.
Okay, wait, where?
I picked it up.
My phone was outside, wasn't outside, but...
Anchor support time.
Thank y'all.
Ah, that guy just fell.
Rat ogre!
Take your healing potion, or your strength potion.
Right on me! I don't have a strength, I have speed.
You motherfucking rat.
I missed. I need the minions off of me, please.
Damn!
Whoa, shit! Run!
Did we get it yet? No. There we go.
Damn!
Well, I'm out of ammo.
Yeah, I need support.
Uh, there were three ammos, I don't know if you guys took any.
Ghost, did you take your ammo?
Swing, shove! Swing, swing, shove. Yeah, I should've saved that ammo, honestly.
You too.
Yeah.
Oh, can you imagine this one on higher difficulty?
Oh!
Ow, I need help.
Look at the lights, they glow before they shoot. Or spark before they shoot.
I need a health back badly.
What if we put this explosive barrel next to us?
Where?
Ow.
Got one.
Thank you, instant eight, uh, instant headshot.
So, I think I need a med pack first.
Member to shove, we're gonna need it on this mission. Uh, gotta go around back.
Nits, there's a med pack down there.
Oh, thank god.
You have to like fold.
How do you?
I'll cover Nits. Well, let's have everyone go back with him.
I'll get rid of the rattling-
Yeah, I can't take him.
He's shooting me.
Okay, I'll take out the storm vermin.
Ghost, storm vermin!
I kinda fell.
I don't know where the, I, I don't know where that rattling gunner is.
Alright, the storm vermin's stuck on the edge.
Ow.
Got him!
Storm vermin! Oh, nice.
Nits, why did you push me?
Alright, back up.
Assassin's somewhere.
This way, guys.
And there's a rattling gunner.
On the poison, it's storm vermin friends!
Oh, it exploded.
Oh yeah, it's not coming?
Well, we kind of were dealing with-
I didn't see anything. Oh, meds!
Ghost needs one and you need one.
There's only one, so med-
Drink it!
I did.
Alright, I'd die if I go down like this, so don't blame me if I'm playing a little bit more conservatively.
Just stay behind me.
Well, stop running in front then!
Yeah, seriously.
I was gonna push him all, Krit.
There's a chest up ahead, Nits.
Speed potion.
You guys okay? I don't have any range to support, yeah. Uh, rat is below.
Watch out!
I am also slowly bleeding out, so...
I know, just stay behind me.
Hey Shale, let's stick together. We're safe together.
I, I like our combo. I push him and you put him on fire.
Alright, everyone watch Ghost back while he does that.
Oh, that's him, not a poison rat, oops.
Watch out!
Ah, fuck!
Watch out, storm vermin!
No!
Okay, one more. Oh, a storm vermin hit takes out my whole shield?
Yes.
Yeah, if they do the overhand swing, it'll take out even if you have 10 shield bars.
Oh damn.
It's designed to counter shield strategies.
Yeah.
Speed potion if anyone wants it.
Yeah, I got it.
There's gotta be, chest, chest. No supplies, god damn it! Supplies? Nope.
Come on, we just gotta break this last support pillar. Pillar down.
Come on, why is there no supply? Oh!
Oh!
This isn't helping.
It's boss fight time.
I don't like the dart.
Oh, this is creepy.
The false move's gonna die.
Wait, can we win?
Wait, this is it?
Kind of even anticlimactic, but...
No, I, I-
I'll take it.
I wanna go in the hole.
What? What? That was like 16 years!
Oh yeah, I forgot there was zombies, or skeletons.
Wait, was that the prologue or the credits?
Dun dun dun, title drop.
Was that the prologue or the credits?
That was it.
That's it?
I was kinda hoping we'd fight that guy, rather than Agnes being there like invincible. But, you know, admittedly, he probably would've been really impossible to beat where we were right there.
That was fun though.
I mean, they could-
Oh, we got food kinda die.
Me.
Yay, battle scepter.
Now do the whole thing unhard.
Okay, everyone, what?
Three.
Five! I get a blue, another gem.
I guess this is how you loot-
I get a hammer.
I guess this is how you do loot rolling, like how to get better loot. I got, I got two.
I've got three skulls strapped to a string. It is, "When equipped, take 40% less damage from Packmaster attacks."
Wait, whoa 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 whoa, am I reading that right? I took the least amount of damage?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the final one, next mission, Horn of Magnus.
Wow! That was kind of anticlimactic.
Well, time to start on the DLC!
It was kind of like a cock tease for future missions, and I don't think they're doing future missions.
I've only one person has to have it?
But, yeah.
Yeah, it's paid to logic.
Before we do the DLC, we have scavengement or uh, survival mode, which I think will fill out the episode rather nicely.
What is survival mode?
Survive.
Pretty much what it means, or what it sounds like.
I got a new weapon.
I got a weapon to salvage.
I got some garbage to burn.
Less damage, less speed, but more targets and more knockback. I will take that.
Yeah, I think I'm going to uh...
Salvage.
Can I upgrade the, no, I can't upgrade the trinket. Like, Packmaster attacks, like, oh no, when is that ever gonna be useful? Like, that is a really too specific trinket.
What about Packmaster?
I get 40% less damage from Packmaster attacks.
Eh.
You know, the rare time they pick you out of the four people and then, you know, actually do a lot of damage to you.
Well, they die fast enough. The thing is, they-
I'm gonna salvage it for blue trinkets. I got 19 blue items. I much prefer that. Alright, everyone all set up and ready?
Yep.
No.
Last stand mode.
Huh, you know what just occurred to me? I can't use my Ember Cage staff to make a green Ember Cage staff, because I don't have any other staffs.
I have that same issue with my uh-
Town meeting or the fall? I don't know which ones should be first.
Town meeting. Or actually, I'd say the fall sounds like it, because you have a town meeting after the attack or something.
Or you have a town meeting and get attacked during it.
Okay, so it starts at three skulls.
Wait, what's three skulls?
Is this kinda like Call of Duty Zombies, or is it more like survive for a certain amount of rounds?
Wait, difficulty veteran?
Yeah, it, it starts at, they don't have one and two skulls, so it starts at three.
It's unlimited time.
That's the thing above hard!
No, no.
Hard's veteran?
Yeah, there's veteran, heroic, and legendary or something on this.
Let's do legendary!
No!
I, we can't actually, we have to beat each one to unlock the next.
Oh damn.
Defeat 13 waves on veteran to unlock champion.
Oh! Uh, he said endless wave.
Yeah.
Oh!
So it's like Call of Duty Zombies?
Except without like map things, this is purely wave combat.
So Left 4 Dead Survival Mode, or Scavenge Mode.
So we'll set up around an infinite ammo thing if we find one.
Like this, the one we're set, alright, that's not ammo.
That's just the, yeah.
Hold up, there are doors.
Yeah, we can prepare and scout out, because you have to actually physically sound horn.
Don't break!
Why, why don't break?
Oh, the chests unlock after certain waves.
Why, why no break?
Dude, you broke it already. But we, we use them as defenses against rats.
Yeah, they cut through them in a second anyway.
And also, that's not like a defensive spot at all. Like, this wouldn't be bad, but-
Alright.
No ammo.
Though yeah, there are groups of chests, but they unlock after specific wave numbers. These are wave seven.
Wait, that says wave zero. The fuck?
There's wave seven to me.
Oh.
Is someone opening stuff?
Hey guys, it's my 10!
What the hell?
It's your 10. Yeah, Nits?
Look, come to the center, Krit. Yeah. Krit, come to the center and look at this barrel.
These are wave three.
I, I assume we hold at the center.
Ghost, look down there and look at that barrel.
Why, what's wrong with it?
Stacked on the barrels.
Did you throw that?
What, what's wrong with it, Nits?
It keeps moving.
It's not moving.
This barrel?
It, it falls down and then lands back on top.
Yeah, honestly, the center looks like the safest place. Let's see, these ones are wave 20.
And this one is moving too.
HD, stop trying to, that's gonna explode!
Way to go, HD, you just blew up both barrels!
Good fucking job!
They probably respawn round to round.
Oh!
Oh.
Apparently they were the signal.
Wait for me.
No, uh, Nits blew the horn.
Oh wait, guys, look, east, they're coming from the east, let's go fight them at the door! This is dungeon defenders!
Yeah, I'll take it.
Except no towers, we're all barbarians, Krit. Even a man like you has a place killing Skaven?
I don't like men. What's your problem?
South!
Charge out!
You okay there?
There wasn't any infinite ammo, so I think ammo should be saved for the uh-
You'll probably get ammo refilled as you go.
Actually, I only test that. Alright, I'm gonna take one shot and we'll see if it refills at the end of the wave.
I'm gonna do that too. West!
I think we're just running around the map.
Well, I bet you eventually that it's gonna be all four spawning.
Yeah, the first wave's just easy.
We don't have to stop them from getting anywhere, so, you know.
No we don't.
No.
They can't touch that guy.
Really?
I think so.
I think it was just until we die.
Okay. So more Halo, uh, Odious 2 firefight than anything else.
What, Call of Duty Zombies?
No, because we're not going anywhere.
I'm more like Helm's Deep.
What the hell is Helm's Deep?
From Lord of the Rings.
What's Lord of the Rings?
Fuck Lord of the Rings.
I don't know if you're shitting with, or-
I don't, I've never watched the movie, so I don't know what Helm's Deep is.
Basically, it was a suicide thing where they were just trying to hold out. They knew they would lose and be overwhelmed.
Though I do know that apparently Lord of the Rings is very little lore from that universe.
Wa- wave 14, Jesus!
Yeah, there's some chests that actually are wave 20. Okay, I'm getting my ass kicked over here.
Yeah!
And that was one. Oh god, what have we gotten ourselves into?
No.
Wait for wave two to start.
Uh, you probably have to blow the horn again.
So, damn, where do you get, maybe the chests have supplies? Uh, wait, wave three, that would be every three waves, wouldn't it?
Probably.
No, that, that wouldn't work.
14 is not a multiple supplier.
No, sometimes three. No, that's sometimes two, fuck.
Alright, try to save our health by sitting up here.
Yeah, come on.
I'm looking to see if we had a chest.
No, the nearest one is wave three, which is the ones over right here.
Where do they come? They come from the north! Nits isn't sitting up here.
I don't like sitting still, plus, that would mean I'd have to use my arrows if I wanted to stay up there.
Ooh, they're coming from other directions.
Or, um...
It's not telling us.
I'm gonna go at the center.
Oh, it's the same rotation, north, uh, whatever this, it rotates.
East, south, west, north.
It's a bopping. It go, it keeps going. Same rotation and then add.
Whee!
Uh, no! No!
Nope! They changed what order they're coming from.
And now they're adding specials into the mix, I think we should withdraw to the center.
Yeah, fight them at the center instead of the doors.
Cause then they have to come up the ramps or jump.
No, we'll fight at these little uh, walls, but we won't push into their territory.
Wait. Oh, a badge!
A ba- badge? We did good. Maybe badges help us. Endurance badge?
Hey, we had no health supplies.
What does an endurance badge do?
An endurance badge earns experience and crafting tokens.
Wave three.
Oh, it, it must be the uh, reward scale.
Alright guys, this wave we open up these chests.
After.
Yes.
Bring around the rosy, catch tiger with the posy.
North, or whatever this direction is.
Uh, west.
I don't like that our compass is tilted.
Where's our compass?
Well, it's just what they call the doors, it's not straight though.
Oh.
Guys, we're going way too far ahead, that's not the walls.
See, what, what happens is one person, oh shit, south.
Okay, so it's more, it's more than one, uh, and-
Yeah, we really need to get back up on that thing then.
I wouldn't say up on the thing, I'd just say near it, because as Nits pointed out, he would have to use his bow to effectively fight. Because he's not a great melee character. He's good, but not-
Oh, he's using right now.
Well, yeah, because like-
There's a strangler.
Already dead.
Nice. Ow!
Nits getting hurt.
Is that?
Yeah.
I think I heard an ogre.
No, but there's a storm vermin in there, I think.
I thought there was two, no, there's not.
Must've just been a clan rat.
Yeah.
Oh, chest opened.
Open, what's that?
I will take the bomb?
That's ammo, not health.
Alright, leave it, cause it'll stay there, so don't use the ammo unless you're drained.
Alright.
Yeah, so I think it's preserve your health.
That sucks.
That's why we should stay on the damn platform.
Oh, fine, everyone get on the platform, because ghost wants us to.
Well, fine, you can go out there and kill yourself, and I'll stay on the platform and survive the longest.
I'm fine with that.
Can I stay down here?
Do ramping?
Oh, they come from right here.
They're coming from here, they're in the center!
Yeah, so that's not a idea.
Not a good strategy.
Ramps, ramps, ramps! Some rape horse say ra- ramps.
They're coming from everywhere now, so really...
I'm just running around in circles.
Yeah, so a weapon with healing, I think, would be like required for this mode.
Which none of us have.
Rattling gunner!
Oh god!
HD, shield!
Yeah, but it ripped through the shield.
Stevy, stevy! Oh my god!
Hey, I'm about dead.
Yeah, me too.
Assassin! I tagged it.
He's still alive.
Assassin back here.
Yay! When do we get some?
Supply drop.
Supply drop, supplies! I will kill all of you for those!
Mine!
Um, one person should take it, who? I say ghost.
Alright, use it only once someone goes down.
Yep, I'll hold on to it. I'm just gonna see it. Supplies? Oh. It's not going away. There it goes. Assassin.